Oh, we're in the council meeting. October 15th, 4th, about to look at meetings. Anyone y'all here tonight that think y'all can come and take part? You look at the county, go. For four weeks, we're gonna make a pass to each other, cancel down right outside of town on business. I'm gonna be here. And we'll blow this this time with all rise and education. Please. Dear Father, thank you so much for this call. We've got to hear the name. This bitch fits the vacuum counter. Please watch over us and give us this knowledge, wisdom, strength, encourage us to make right citizens, friends of the county. Please let's treat one another and open and complete with faith. Please watch over the ones that protect us both near and far. Be with them and their families and them at home safely. Dear Father, thank you. Please be with the people that has had the misery all around this county. Devastations to them. Also below us to the south, to the north of us, please be with all of them who is in this and lean on you for strength. Dear the Father, please, thank you for our many blessings we have in our county. Our citizens, we keep standing up and coming and stepping forward and answering the call for people in need. Thank you for our employees that have worked around the clock to try to get this county back in shape. In God's name we pray, we all turn home safely. In God's name we pray, it will remain the same. Amen.
My leader, your life of our government, our state of the calendar, your true love, of which stands under language, under God, in the Bible, for the living and the dead just as are all.
Our October 1st ordinance has not been received yet. When we approve of them, we'll be moving on to our next thing, the census comments. Mr. Harmon called the names. Please step forward and address the chair. You have three minutes in this first round. It's on Jenna Ivan's only. Mr. Harmon.
Mr. Chairman, first speaker is State Shalvey.
Please state your name, district of record, for our meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Dave Shalvey, District 4. I'm here to talk about the ordinance. I've come to the last computer to talk about why we're doing this ordinance. The issue is that it's a large amount of homes that are getting built in the area with a lot of property that's not been zoned. I believe you were concerned about the amount of houses that were on board. This might stem to that because you guys have been hearing concerns about the amount of development in the area that affect the schools and the fire. When you read the changes in the language, you really don't know what you're changing in the existing ordinance. It's still very confusing, including the fact I don't think this is bizarre, right? I have a dozen things on Facebook. But I would think that before you vote on this specific one, you might want to spend some time explaining what exactly it does and benefits. I'm gonna let folks know a little more about why we're making this change here and what exactly the whole goal is. Additionally, I'm gonna suggest again that you might want to consider putting a counter referendum place for the people to vote on whether they want zoning in their precinct. And this body here has the authority to ahead to do that. I think you get a lot of support, certainly in the Pedestrian Precinct, Rockneer, and now Cambridge and really near it. But there's a lot of folks that would love the opportunity and I want to get those petitions filed. So that along with maybe explaining what this ordinance change is all about would be great. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Harmon.
Mr. Chairman, no one else has signed up.
We're gonna move on over to 5D, First Read, 2024-031. Orders to mean Chapter 24, Section 24-338, code of ordinances, Anderson County, sideline under steps and number of lot sizes, which may be approved by a final summary plan of the matters related thereto. This bit of public hearing, we're gonna go in. Before we go in, I'm gonna explain this because they have this, they get braided, get on Facebook, I call it, and make a bunch of accusations that they don't understand something. I'll just pick a phone call and ask them if they understand, don't understand what I'm saying. I'm gonna explain, layman's terms in Mr. Burns, God knows what's on. This here's a trinity. Right now, we changed this a few years ago. We went from having four lots. Anybody can come up with four lots. You can do four lots without going to planning commission. We changed it. We can do seven lots without going to planning commission. What this does is go back to written thing, go back to forces, make it stronger, has got the planning commission where the citizens will have a say in it and get back plus lot size a little bit better. Trying to encourage you, say this was something about side distances on road. Just all this was changed to us on main, not main road or on road. Not in subdivision, this is in roads. Mr. Harmon, you elaborate.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of council. This amendment does the following things, and it's very much my key address, Mr. Chairman. It reduces the number of lots from seven to four that can be planted by summary plan, which means that anything above four, and if residential lots, will go to the planning commission for approval or denial, as they may decide. It also requires that each lot be a minimum of one acre in size. It also allows a nine subdivision of four lots or less, we're still dealing with four lots or less, with road frontage to be developed with a 20-foot driveway that will go up to the various four lots, or it could be less than four lots, it could be three or two. As I said, the current code allows for seven lots to be planted by summary plan. If this ordinance is passed tonight, it will allow four lots to be planted by summary plan.
Thank you. Everyone, well hearing, Mr. Chairman, please step forward, state your name and district. Chris Chair, please, you've got three minutes. You want to? Anyone? Up here in the crowd, we have motion, just on the floor. Like, Councilman Davis, say it, Mr. Wilson. Any more discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Councilman, Jimmy Davis.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing this motion, this order change forward. I've had a lot of phone calls due to the fact that some statements on Facebook. A lot of these people have read the Bible as much as they read faith, because that's the better gospel, reading that faith, because I promise you that. Secondly, I would like to say that everybody that called me from my district, once I explained it to them, they were all for it and they were very supportive. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to clarify, Mr. Harmon, for a record, in that the ordinance change, it's right to anywhere in our town is ours. Now, that's not, Mr. Chairman. We're gonna make sure, it seems like best to kick for ages today, so we're gonna get out here and run about like it's ours. There's nothing's ours anymore. All in favor, question, please. All those light signs, the question carries, thanks. We're gonna move on to item number 5B, 2024-035. Orders to mean agreement for the develop of the Joan County industrial business park, 2010 Park, Anderson County, Greenland County, and larger park. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. As you know, this is adding property to the park agreement between Anderson and Greenland. Greenland has requested to place this parcel into the park agreement for a yet unannounced project in Greenland County that is creating jobs there. This will allow the project to access certain benefits that are available through the South Carolina and Simmons program. And then, of course, as you know, Anderson County agreed that same benefit, we have something on the outside of the line coming from Anderson to Greenland. But it's the same benefits for projects that when they located in our county. Greenland County Council sends its thanks for assisting this project and the forward to assisting us with our nation.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. We have a public hearing, we should speak for this matter, please step forward, state your name and district. You have three minutes, Chris Chair, please, anyone else? Seeing here, we're closing, motion move this forward. Say it, motion, Mr. Wilson, second count, Jimmy Davis, any discussion? All in favor, question, please. All those light signs, the question carries, thanks. We're gonna move on to item 5C, Third Read, 2024-036. Orders to mean the agreement for the development of the Joan County Saddle Line and SMF Incorporated to fix certain modification that is concerning certain property now or here located in the county to other matters related thereto, project Anderson's bench. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Project, yes, our company, SMF, is adding a couple of properties reefer the new tax matters to the original property they had, but I wanted to be sure it was captured and later be agreement. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, this bit of public hearing, we should speak this matter, please step forward, state your name and district. Chris Chair, you have three minutes. You want to? Seeing here, up here, big club, motion move this forward. Mr. Councilman Nelson, second, Mr. Wilson, any discussion? All in favor, question, please. All those light signs, the question carries, thanks. We're gonna move on to item number D, 5D, 2024-037. Orders to mean the section, is 2-756 through 2-764, related union relations council, Anderson County, Tadworth, stuff related thereto. This is a machine tool technology company, family owned, has been in our county for about nine years. Taxes paid last year were, on this particular parcel, were $3,500. New taxes will add $36,000, over 30 years, 2.5 billion. Community impact, 16 million in the first year, and over 30 years, 185 million. Thank you. Public hearing, we should speak this matter, please step forward, state your name and district. You have three minutes, Chris Chair, please, you want to? Seeing here, we're closing, motion move this forward. Say it, Mr. Wilson, second count, Jimmy Davis, any discussion? All in favor, question, please. All those light signs, the question carries, thanks. We're gonna move on to item number G, 2024-039. Orders to mean section, is 2-756 through 2-764, related union relations council, Anderson County, Tadworth, stuff related thereto. Moving on, Mr. Harmon, just hit items on this for public hearing. About Mr. Burns.
Mr. Chairman, this comes from a request from the Union Relations Commission. They wanted to have a manageable size so they would have a quote for their meetings. This comes explicitly from them, and they request council's approval.
Thank you. This bit of public hearing, we should speak this matter, please step forward, state your name and district. You have three minutes, Chris Chair, please, you want to? Seeing here, we're closing, motion move this forward. Say it, Mr. Wilson, second count, Jimmy Davis, any discussion? All in favor, question, please. All those light signs, the question carries, thanks. We're gonna move on to item number 5E, 2024-039. Orders to mean section, 24-139, 24-336, provides for certification. Utility providers and utility services are liable to propose developments, other matters related thereto. Mr. Harmon, if you would, just to break me on this, this is the night here, if you come and want to develop, it's gonna be sewer service, so you'd have a letter from the sewer department saying it's going to surge, the water department saying, saying that, and so on. Go on, Mr. Harmon.
Yes, Howard. Yes, sir. The primary utility providers would be required to provide the letter that certifies that the utility service would be available for the project.
Thank you. This bit of public hearing, we should speak this matter, please step forward, state your name and district. You have three minutes, Chris Chair, you have three minutes. You want to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Dan Arbel, District 7, member of the planning commission. I just want to thank you all for doing the in-depth research that you've been doing and trying to move forward with some new ordinances and give us more teeth. It'll make our job a whole lot easier as we try to do the right thing for the citizens of this county while we balance their interests along with the rights and privileges of the developers that come. So that's just a thank you for being not for the planning commission, I just speak individually. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your service. Anyone else? We're here, we're closed, we have a motion. Say it, Mr. Sanders, say it, Mr. Wilson, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, a minute. Captain Jimmy Davis. Again, I thank you for bringing this ordinance to us, to have these readings on. I think this is a great thing for the planning commission, and Mr. Harmon has asked that Mr. Garland make sure we recover this from the planning commission and turn it into training.
Yes, sir, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor, question, please. All those light signs, the question carries, thanks. Moving on, item number D, 2024-040. Orders to mean section, is 2-756 through 2-764, related union relations council, Anderson County, Tadworth, stuff related thereto. Moving on, Mr. Harmon, just hit items on this for public hearing. About Mr. Burns.
Mr. Chairman, this comes from a request from the Union Relations Commission. They wanted to have a manageable size so they would have a quote for their meetings. This comes explicitly from them, and they request council's approval.
Thank you. This bit of public hearing, we should speak this matter, please step forward, state your name and district. You have three minutes. You want to? Hearing, seeing now, so, motion move this forward. Say it, Mr. Wilson, second count, Jimmy Davis, any discussion? I just want to say, I appreciate our union relations council for all they do for the county, not Anderson County, council of the county as a whole. They did great work and for citizens of Anderson County, and I really appreciate what they do. This is a point of thank from council members of all of you. Appreciate you. All in favor, question, please. All those light signs, the question carries, thanks. We're gonna move on to item G, 2024-041. Orders to mean the Anderson County official zoning lands, rezon 2.1, plus land savages from highway to marshal district, C-2, innovative zoning district, ICP, on two parcels planned identified in Denver City Springs precinct, drifts highway 86, council sideline, marshal identified, PMS number 65-0-4-020, and 65-0-4-021. We'll have a public hearing on this this time. You want a few years ahead of that? Yes, sir. Thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry, the sign is due to say, this is a public hearing, we should speak this matter, please step forward, State 9, District. For the record, Chris Chair, please, you have three minutes. Seeing here, we're closing, motion move this forward. Say it, Mr. Johnson, Jimmy Davis, makes a motion move forward, Mr. Wilson, second motion, any further discussion? Seeing here, all in favor, question, please. All those light signs, the question carries, thanks. Some last, Mr. Sanders, please step back in. We're gonna move on to item number 5H, 2024, Third Read, 042. Orders to mean section, 24-335, code of orders, Anderson Saturday line, provided land use administrator presented to the planning commission in four regards to closing up and other matters related thereto. Mr. Harmon.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and members of council. What this ordinance does is provide that the land use administrator present a report to the planning commission and not a recommendation on whether or not the planning commission should approve or deny the project. It will simply be in the form of a report going to the planning commission, and it puts the project in their hands to make a decision on it. It also provides a review committee meet with the applicant within 30 days of the application to review the project. The review committee consists of the land use administrator, representatives of the county resident bridges, wastewater, and stormwater departments, and also that the preliminary class will be provided to school districts, to fire marshal, to EMS, to utility providers, and to the South Carolina Department of Transportation if a state road is involved or impacted by the project.
And all invited.
Yes, sir.
And that, land use administrator is the position we got right now in Canton, what have you called Ms. Hunter's, our planning director?
Yes.
That's a new position, she's had that, it's going on, and I'll go into detail when it comes up for a vote, in a discussion about what this is, why this is coming up, what this is about. This bit of public hearing, we should speak this matter, please step forward, State 9, District, you have three minutes, Chris Chair, please.
Stanley Hicks, District 4. So I see what's happening is that you're gonna cut out the citizens in this so that you get approval all for them, you go for the planning commission, so that the planning commission won't have any opportunity to hear from the citizens, and you get a recommendation to approve, even though you just said that you're gonna not get a recommendation. But the past, the way that this has been going, you always get a recommendation from the planning of the land use administrator. You always get a recommendation to approve anything that comes before the planning commission. And only when the citizens have very little time to come up and speak to the planning commission and argue against this development, this dense zoning development, conservation subdivision, IZD, then they get to hear from the citizens. So I kind of see what's happening here. You're trying to cut it out so that you won't have the planning commission voting to get something that you want to pass through. And I think you say on one hand, you thank the citizens for coming and participating in the process, and on the other hand, you insult them to their face when you make smart comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Dan Arbel, District 7. As a member of the planning commission, I want to say, I wasn't gonna speak to this, but I also would like to thank you for doing this, because the cart has actually been before the horse. It has been, it has put us on the planning commission in a somewhat, in a position that we shouldn't be in, because all these, all these boxes should be checked before it ever comes before us. I think that used to be the case, and somehow or other it was reversed. This is actually an improvement that will help us. And in fact, there's one other thing I might say, not all these applications even make it for us, because the ones that make it for us that actually have been previously approved by the staff, there are things, there are developers that come that don't even get that far, because they don't meet the requirements even up to where it used to be. This just increases the requirements beyond that. We really need to hear, yes, we need to hear from the water commission, the fire commission, we need to hear from utilities, and importantly, we need to hear from schools about school population, because these developments are a huge burden going forward on schools, especially when you consider the immigration that's happening now, and then we're getting perhaps students that do not speak the English language. So this is, this is a cautionary thing for you to do, and it brings it back to where it used to be, as I understand, and thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dave Shalvey, District 4. I appreciate you doing this, and I don't have a problem with you trying to make efforts to try to control and make sure folks put the right things in place. Alicia Hunter is the woman pretty much recommends and approves every one of those large developments to the planning board. I have an issue with the fact that she's been involved, pretty much creating all this havoc, at least recommending it for the staff to do. But I think the biggest problem is, I'm gonna reiterate, is we have a ton of unzoned property in this county. When you look at the map, all that stuff, there's a ton of it. You guys are doing things that are, you're trying to fix the problem from the side. We know the problem is unzoned property. You zone that property, Mr. Harmon has every tool in the book he needs to stop it, to regulate it. You know, in District 4, we got a $120 million bond that we just got done paying for because the schools got large, because we got so many people moving in there. So what I would ask again is, I appreciate what you're doing, but you really gotta hit the issue dead on, let the voters vote on whether they want zoning in their precincts. That is the only thing that's gonna fix this problem in the short term, and you guys are up to it at that point, versus create another, another role, trying to make it like you're gonna give these guys more tools. Give them the ultimate tool, give them the zoning to the precincts that want it. Thank you.
Anyone else? You want to? We're here, we're closing, motion move this forward. Say it, Mr. Johnson, Jimmy Davis, say it, or Miss Wilson, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, a minute.
Jimmy Davis.
Again, I thank you for bringing this forward. I think this is a great thing to do. I think it changes some verbiage that on the staff level, and again, this is giving more to the planning commission, and they're gonna have more information than they've ever had before on a development. I don't understand if there's any confusion about this, because this is pretty cut and dry, that the planning commission will be able to receive the report, and staff will basically give a report to the planning commission saying, yes, this developer has met the requirements that are in the county ordinances, our laws. They have, the developer meets it, then that's all staff's gonna do, is say they've met the requirements, and the planning commission can make their decision at that point. If anything, this gives more input before the development ever makes it to the planning commission. So I think there's gonna be more, more opportunity, you know, upfront for that happen. And as far as notification for the public, I hope everyone in the county would sign up to receive the planning commission packets, because at that point, you would receive the email just like I do, just like everybody else in Anderson County that signs up to get it, and they would have the opportunity to review it. They can talk to their council people, they can talk to their planning commission, whoever they choose to talk to. And I think this is a great thing, and I look forward to voting for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Captain Nelson, or Miss Wilson?
Christian, first of all, again, I want to say thank you. This, I had this come into my district just a couple of weeks ago. Didn't make it to the planning commission, however, had some of this stuff been checked off before, we would have had to kind of go through what we had to go through here to start with. Because what they said was there to be, to be, I had this thing even start, was not even there to start with. So had this checklist been in place, I don't think we would have had to deal with what we had to deal with a couple of weeks ago. So I think it's a good thing, I think it's just basically checking the boxes, making sure they have all this before it's sent to the planning commission. And again, once it goes to the planning commission, you'll still have your time to stand up and talk, just like anybody else does. So it's not taking anything away, it's just making sure that they have what they say they have, so we can, they can push that to the planning commission inside whether it's dangerous or good. So I appreciate it, it would save a lot of time if we had it before, but I appreciate you having it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This does become quite generally helpful for the planning commission and everyone. I'm gonna read a few lines from this ordinance, because it provides the planning commission a clearer set of considerations. Its duty, in addition to the standards set forth in the methodical and the report of the staff, the planning commission will also take into consideration the following criteria when making its decision to reject or approve the preliminary subdivision plan 1, public's health, safety, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. 2, balancing the interest of subdivision owners and the public. 3, the effects of the proposed development on the local tax base. 4, the ability of existing planned infrastructure and transportation systems to serve the proposed development. We had the appearance of some of the developers rushing to warehouse or bank properties in full consideration that's not allowed for our planning commission nor for the communities. And I think this makes it clearer, it gives everybody on both sides of the issue, clearer criteria to work with. And I think it will be, we're gonna be working in the ready seal again, thought we had that straightened out, but apparently we didn't. But anyway, one step at a time. Thank you, Father, for the involvement helping make our county grow and prosper.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm gonna say two things, what this ordinance does. Number one, what it does, you go to the planning commission, we give the citizens talk, but the first thing I say, schools, fire, EMS, sheriff. It brings everybody aboard in a meeting, discussed this, they'll go firsthand, staff can get this, get this information. We're not cutting no citizens out, no worry about this, making strong to get information. Number two, I want to say, Ms. Hunter, you have a fantastic job, appreciate you in Anderson County, but David. What I want to also say about Ms. Hunter's name, it's been a bad, this up in the halls, it's been a bad misunderstanding, since I hope this is gonna change for her. Staff has recommended approval. Staff, if all that was the staff approving something or not approving something, what they don't even want to pay attention. We said it.
even pay. We said it, the state all had planning mission. That's why we didn't do this. So instead of saying recommended staff approval, it's gonna have a report. They're not gonna approve or disapprove. That's why they did, could have been some misunderstandings on both sides, thinking the council, that the staff is fully supporting this project since they don't want it gets upset. Then, planning commission turns it down, puts along the boxes, well, the staff recommended, we checked all the boxes, why didn't, why, how can they turn it down? This gives you all a better players and a better, a, a better clearer picture what's all that they've done and things. What's all this about? Makes, makes it more transparent, give more information for everybody. And this report, when it comes out from the fire department, everybody, it wants it, I have, they'll have to talk to them. That's what this, 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 this whole thing is about, trying, people trying to turn something around, twist something around about this, it's been going on that way. It's unbelievable. She had to talk about yourself. All, all affected groups, all those light signs have much carried nationally. Moving on, item number seven, eight on six on seven A. First reading, twenty twenty four, day zero four, four orders authorized the execution of the tax special source credit during the bound twenty nine stands sidelined by project red fox. Expect certain deep amount of spending problem in the county by such problems, certain payments, no taxes, including business, certain special credits and unwarranted there to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Um, this again is, uh, holders coming to invest dollars in, uh, development in Anderson County and, uh, building, uh, spec building opportunities for us. And we don't have to do this ourselves, spend this dollar, um, to attract more companies here. Uh, this is a family owned local company, uh, bringing a investment of five billion dollars, building a thirty thousand square foot three stone building, um, with, uh, the intention of building a seventy thousand, in fact, we already have a steel on the ground, uh, to add to that, um, industrial park area. Um, the current taxes paid ten thousand dollars. Um, the anticipated taxes for twenty twenty five, uh, added to that ten thousand additional fourteen dollars. Thirty year, uh, taxes, one point nine million, almost two million dollars. And one year, um, community impact, one point seven million. Thirty year community impact, eleven million, seven hundred thousand. And that's without the increase of our alley, without creating a substantial, uh, added to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Here's that. I have a motion, move this forward. Go ahead, Mr. Sanders. Second. Ms. Wilson, I'm forward discussion. Unfazed, motion hands. Those light signs, much carried nationally. Move on seven B, twenty twenty four, day zero four five, orders to man agreement for development, John County Industrial Biggest Park, twenty ten park, Anderson, Brandon County, Martin Park, project red fox. Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Chairman, this is adding, uh, project red fox to that same industrial, uh, most kind of industrial park, uh, but we have bring also the, uh, project and access the incentives provided by South Carolina economic development incentive for, like, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Have a motion, move this forward. Motion, Ms. Wilson, second. Second, council members, uh, clean this. Any discussion? Unfazed, motion hands. Those light signs, much carried nationally. We're gonna move on now to, uh, resolutions. This is resolution eight A, twenty twenty four, day zero five two, resolution expiration intent to cease county maintenance zone and authorize county consent to judicial abandonment of plugging of the portion of stone drive designated as C one, C dash one, dash one, seven seven, somebody's way to do, it's in District Seven. We have a motion?
Yes.
Motion, Ms. Wilson, have a second. Second, council members, any discussion?
I just want to point out, um, this is apparently one of those roads that was paved back in the fifties or sixties and when it was basically a driveway, the part that's going to be closed, a private property, um, said this would be nice to take it out of the county responsibility.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Unfazed, motion hands. Those lights, much carried nationally. We're gonna move on eight B, twenty twenty four, day zero five eight, resolution authorized execution and review, inducement agreement, island twenty nine stands sidelined by project red fox, where certain conditions, Anderson County, which excuse fee and wood tax special source credit, we expect to a industrial project in the county, where the project reserved payments, certain freezing wood taxes, where our project currently provided certain credits against free payments, reimbursement, investment, blade infrastructure, unwarranted there too, project red fox. Mr. Nelson.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of council. The resolution is bearing this summary of ordinance, um, when you passed just a few minutes ago, uh, for five million dollars of capital investment for a thirty thousand square foot stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a motion, move this forward. First, council members, motion, second, any discussion? Unfazed, motion hands. Those lights, much carried nationally. Move on the item number C, twenty twenty four, day zero five nine, resolution supported the heat mountain power mill in Port, South Carolina, as far, calling attention to urgency for more wood prices and chip, given, uh, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has become crisis after the storm and now just read this brief resolution, a lot of effects may not be aware. Whereas South Carolina's forestry associated wood and paper products industries, including manufacturers, timber landowners, foresters, wood dealers and logging companies, create twenty three billion dollars in economic value annually only surpassed the natural to by South Carolina's tourism industry. And whereas South Carolina's foresters plant one point three eight trees where every tree are removed from the ground. Whereas South Carolina's wood products producers are increasingly facing a crisis as more paper mills and lumber mills in the Carolinas continue to shutter their doors, even as demand worldwide for the products continues to rise. And whereas according to the South Carolina Forester Commission, logging and related industries rank number one in total jobs, number two in overall labor income, and number three in direct economic output, and depend upon bulk lighting and shipping facilities that are becoming harder to find, the nearest supports being in Wilmington, North Carolina and Savannah, Georgia. Now, therefore, due to solve this fifteenth day of September two thousand twenty four, an meeting duly assembled as the Anderson County Council provides for support for forest related, related industries and calls on all parties to work together to find solutions for this idle industry. And I put that forward.
Second. And motion, Ms. Wilson, second, council members, any discussion?
Man, quickly point out with the, the thousands and thousands of marketed virtual timber level trees, those softwood and hardwood, around now, if we had vinyl mills in operation, a lot of that could have been halted and not wasted, costing the public money to have to grind out. It's just really, it's a, a total change from the way the market's were about ten years ago and it's a real crisis for our state. We thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Wilson, I thank you for bringing this, this to our, you know, forward force to pass this resolution. I will say I had a discussion with a, a friend of mine who, uh, he's older, but he put a lot of his retirement into the growth of timber years and years ago. And now he, he don't have anybody that will even come and think it because there's nobody taking part with it. So people's retirements are at stake here that have invested in timber and, and as a resource where they're, where they're going down the road and, and they can't get anything. So it will never produce mature timber down the road.
Another point is the trees produce oxygen. So, but they're very environmentally helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. Unfazed, motion hands. Those light signs, much carried nationally. Middle item number nine, public hearings, transportation sales and use tax subject to November fifth, twenty twenty four referendum pursuant to title four, chapter thirty seven, code of order, code of law, sidelined nineteen sixty, amended. We don't take no votes because I, uh, the law, state law's got a flipping like Mr. Harmon.
Excuse me. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of council. I'd like to first read into the record the notes of the hearing, uh, for this, uh, matter. Uh, this was published in the Anderson Independent Mail, um, September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four. Uh, the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Anderson County will conduct a sales tax referendum on November fifth, two thousand twenty four, ordered pursuant to that ordinance entitled and amended and restated ordinance providing for the imposition of a transportation sales and use tax subject to a November fifth five, two thousand twenty four referendum, pursuant to title four, chapter thirty seven of the Code of Laws of South Carolina nineteen seventy six as amended, ordering a referendum in connection therewith and providing for matters relating thereto, enacted by the County Council of Anderson County, South Carolina, on August sixth, two thousand twenty four. A public hearing will be held to receive oral and written comments on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, at six thirty P. M. concerning the referendum. The public hearing will be held in the council chamber, second floor, historic courthouse, one oh one, South Main Street, Anderson, South Carolina, two nine six, two four. Uh, the, the reason the county did an amended and restated ordinance was because the state legislature changed the law to exempt unprepared foods from, from the tax. And so we did an amended and restated ordinance. We, we held a public hearing on this ordinance when it was enacted. The public hearing you are holding tonight is required by state law and is provided, is by state law in South Carolina Code, section four dash thirty seven dash thirty, uh, section A two. Uh, and that has been appropriately published and, and you can now conduct a public hearing that is required before the referendum.
Then, call him, we have to get him out. Mr. Speaker, please step forward, state's name and district for record. You have three men, please dress cheer. Seeing him out, we're gonna close. We're gonna move on now to item ten, being approvals. Just one of those.
Uh, this is for you.
Okay. Your favorite, keep that on, uh, being ten A, being number twenty five, day zero zero four, scrap metal plate. Mr. Barnes, who's great at this.
Mr. Chairman, we have scrap metal, that is the amount of money in the high river that we can sell our scrap metal for, just request approval from council for that.
Well, motion, move this forward. Motion, Sanders, second, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? Sanders.
I talked with, uh, Regsman, with Regsman over at Department and that is a company that we, it's a local company. We've been doing business with the entire time and he's very active with it and so I'm planning on supporting it.
Anyone else? Unfazed, motion hands. Those light signs, much carried nationally, some lights, some states, Mr. Chairman, if you want to step back in. We'll move on out to ten B, being number twenty five, day zero zero six, land cleared and green ground.
Mr. Chairman, this is necessary because if you wish, the bench happened in Anderson County, request approval from council. I believe Mr. Smith has spoken with every member of council about this.
We have a motion, move this forward. Motion, Sanders, second, motion, any discussion? Unfazed, motion hands. Light signs, much carried nationally. Former members, first councilman, anyone having that?
Oh, yes. Um, and all four from District Seven, preparation please for, um, the shadow use until the thirty thousand dollar.
Plus, make some motion, we have a second. Second, councilman Elliott, any discussion? Unfazed, Ms. Wilson's, motion, your hands. All those light signs, much carried nationally. Anyone else? Move on, man, straight forward.
Nothing in time, Mr. Chairman.
Move on out to thirteen, says some comments. Mr. Harmon, call his name. You have three men, please for the record, state's name, state's father, record, dress cheer. Mr. Harmon.
Mr. Chairman, I want to sign up to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Move on, Martha Councilmember, Mr. Jimmy Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna continue to commend the Minister of Defense and his staff for the ongoing support and work after the, uh, the storm and all that you're doing to use your staff. The countless hours you are putting in to, to make sure that Anderson County's safe and we're getting cleaned up and, and I look forward to our, our, our pickups for the, for the citizens. And, uh, I also wanna thank, uh, uh, planning Mr. Chairman Dan Harville for being here tonight. Appreciate your service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Sanders.
Likewise, on what the councilman Davis said, uh, our employees and our staff have been, yeah, great team here. And it's showed during these, uh, last two weeks in the storm. Uh, we, we don't know how blessed and fortunate we are here. I've got to see, uh, some things up in North Carolina that is just, uh, that you're never get out of your head. I mean, there's entire towns and cities wiped out and I'm just, uh, thankful Anderson County is spared and, um, I'm proud of their citizens that stepped up. It didn't matter what color or political affiliation you were, but if they saw someone in me, they came and they helped. And I'm just, uh, proud to be in Anderson, and, and my faith in humanity has drastically increased. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Lindas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Piggyback, we, uh, we had some citizens called there a little, a little patient, told us we placed it in. We're going in. We've got a lot of, a lot of debris that need to be picked up and, um, and we're gonna get it. Also, this Saturday from forty six, I'll be having a second annual fish fry. Anyone that likes fish, come on out and we'll be having forty six at the farm this morning, this Saturday. Fish is hot. Much as you can eat. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, just to piggyback off everybody else, we, we've had a rough couple of weeks everywhere. Um, and I know it's, it's been great to see everybody coming together and everybody helping each other and especially what the county's been doing to help us out and get all this stuff done and our employees working around the clock to try to get us back to where we need to be. Um, just wanna say I appreciate all our law enforcement, our fire personnel, our EMS. It was a rough couple of weeks there for everybody, not having power and still a lot of people don't have any of that. But, um, we're coming through and I appreciate everybody's patience and help. And again, thank, thank you, everybody for coming together and making this, even though it wasn't the hardest in the world, everybody coming together made it a good time. We got many makers, we got to sit outside and cook the grills. So it was, uh, it's an eye opening experience, something I hope we never see again, but something that we obviously weren't totally prepared for, but we're always prepared and came through, I believe, better on the other side. So thank you.
Thank you, Captain Wilson, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, um, repeat all the wonderful things each of you have said and all the efforts you've made. And a big thank you to all our county staff. I don't think any of y'all got much sleep. And of course, our utility companies, it's just incredible, the efforts they made in very trying situations, but some of them are, there's a young lady that, um, we were acquainted with, she's in law enforcement, who moved here from New Jersey. And she said, I'm so glad to be in a county where people care about each other and come together to work to make things better. So that's Anderson County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I want to thank everybody, uh, by saying, and I, I'm supposed to piggyback on what that lady said, and I have to remember, she said, that's why I think I always say I'm one of so many Anderson County specials, our citizens. And, uh, I wanna thank the administrative staff, what all they do and our citizens, for what they, what they've done with this thing. I wanna thank Dan Harville, chairman, our planning commission, all planning commission, and just a thank this job. Y'all, I said, making half side hacked, another half unhacked. So, uh, uh, appreciate what y'all do. I'm gonna say one more thing. We, plus us each one round, took the front two some. We've got a, I was a part of this back in planning mission back in the nineties, I think, nineteen ninety nine. It's a long time ago. We have its own office in Anderson County, and it works. We've got, we've got three scenes of decent its office. We've got parts of the county former failure, Mr. Davis. One time, Mr. Fred don't want to be zoned. But as a way that you can be zoned, if, if you want to. It's not very, very easy. It's not that hard. It's not, it ain't supposed to be easy because you're taking, taking away other people's rights. away other people's rights to a certain extent. But there is, it's a way to do it, does, do it by voting for a sentence, and a lot of stuff that generally keep harming about in the penalty compare, zoning can fix that problem. It's like a San Antonio midway road. If you get any, you miss out on any, sure, examples, see, when you're in penalties, green room, green game, but times, and whatnot, that kicks everything to the curb, that's zoning. Don't, don't fall in, look sober, they get, they get their own things like that. There is, it is, it is up to the people, ain't up to the council, and it's meant to be that way. That's one thing I'll say to Mr. Wilson, you should, you should call him, pass the gene, I think, to come up with that planning board, go up and complain about how they, it's people, citizen driven, it's zoning, and that's what you should do. Thank y'all, have a good night.